Move along here. Welcome to the Weneca Village Council Regular Meeting and Study Session, September 9, 2025. We'll call this meeting to order. Let's all mute our cell phones and other electronic devices so we don't interrupt the proceedings, and I'll ask Manager Bayhand to do a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Myers?
Here.
Trustee Apitoff?
Here.
Trustee Dolman is not here yet. Trustee Ursick?
Here.
Trustee Albenson?
Here.
Trustee Handler is absent, and President Dearborn?
Here. May I ask Trustee Myers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rob, can we do a quorum check?
Yes, checking a bunch of dates remaining meeting for September is the 16th. Is that look okay?
Yeah, I'll be out.
You're out?
I'll be overseas.
Okay. And then in October, there are actually four meetings: the 7th, the 14th, and the 21st, which is their scheduled meetings, and then the October 30th All-Day Budget Session. Any conflicts for those dates?
Looking forward to it.
And?
Thank you.
It's a heavy load in October, but we've had light loads the last few months, so make up for lost time. At this point, we'll move to item four, Public Comment, and I'll ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak about an item not on tonight's agenda for public comment.
Are you going to talk about bikes?
Free to.
Was that focal that you were person?
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Patricia Walsh. My family is here with me. They may or may not join me in speaking, but we just wanted to share a little bit about our experiences with the work of the Friends of the Green Bay Trail in the restoration to native plants in the area that they began, which is the area of the trail that directly backs up from our house. So it's just been such a wonderful experience to see them out there with young people and others from the community, turning this area that was really overrun by buckthorn, which is this terribly unproductive invasive species, and returning it back to native flowers and plants. We've all noticed a difference in things such as the birds and butterflies and pollinators and things of that nature. This past weekend, we took a bike ride up to Glencoe along the trail, where, of course, they've done a bit more work up there, and it's just really remarkable to see the difference between the areas that have been restored and the areas that are being restored and the areas where there's still work to do. So we wanted to highlight the work of the Friends of the Green Bay Trail and certainly promote more of that work being funded and supported.
Thank you very much, and my understanding is that some of your neighbors agree with this, I believe.
I think that's absolutely true.
Yeah, that's terrific. Well, the Friends have been a great resource of ours, and they're doing a terrific job. I was up there the other day, and there was a whole group Saturday morning, is my understanding, and I think they're making great progress, so I'm very happy. We're all very happy that you're pleased with this.
Very much.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Others for public comment. Hello, Ted?
It's going a lot. Hi. So, three things. So first, okay, I appreciate the new stop signs, four-way stops. I think, you know, if you guys are going to do this, you need to make all the tree streets four-way stops, because for the first time in like 15 years, I drifted through a stop sign, because for 15 years, the stop signs have all been the same. It's been a grid, you knew kind of which ones were two ways and which directions, and now you're putting up four-way stop signs in new places, and that throws off the whole logic of the system. So if you think four-way stop signs are safer, they should all be four-way stops, but, you know, maybe not Elm Street, but everything else, because otherwise, people are going to get confused, especially people that have been here a long time, where they expect two blocks between stop signs. Then, I think it's great, I'm saying that sarcastically, that you guys are getting rid of the community service officers policing the children crossing the streets. You know, we have to, of course, pay for a police officer to be here, because you know how dangerous it is for the council here. We need someone to tackle people, but, you know, the children, that's a whole nother thing. Now we'll have a community kind of hired person, although the only time I'm aware of any possible injury occurring to anyone was when the community service almost was almost run over by a Mercedes-Benz in front of Core Island about 10 or 12 years ago, and I thought it was hilarious, because it was sort of like, you know, Weneka SWAT. Apparently, she got on her radio, and the Mercedes that almost ran over her was apparently pulled over before it even got to Green Street. I can just imagine the police response when, like, the community officer said, "I was almost hit by a car," ignoring my stop sign. But let's not worry about that. You guys have the police officer here, because you never know when something might happen, right? Like, if, you know, and it's a fascinating thing. If I were to come in here, or anybody were to come in here, if, I'm using if, and say, "You know, you guys are all crazy, I'm going to shoot all of you," then I'm guessing that there would be some sort of response. The police might tackle me.
That's kind of inappropriate.
Well, but I'm making the-
That's not appropriate.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Come on.
But I'm making a point, but, you know, if a child shows up at school and makes a threat, you know, people get involved.
Okay.
If a bank robber shows up, but here we let a private landowner put a sign on public property threatening to shoot people, right? That's the sign. You guys all know the sign, I sent it to you, and that sign stayed up for a week, right? The police knew it was there, the police knew the threat was there, the, no one did anything. So why is it that some people are allowed such great leeway? Because I'm guessing there's going to be no investigation into this, right? No one's going to say, "Oh, this was inappropriate, this was a threat to public safety, this person or these people should be, you know, given some sort of a rebuke." No, they're going to be allowed to go on. I understand the sign's been taken down, which, that's great, but, you know, but that's the real problem, is that when some people say things, you know, I'm glad I don't have a broken collarbone already, but, you know, when other residents do things that are shockingly inappropriate, the response from the village is silence. You know, I, I can't believe that the police didn't go down there and immediately remove the sign and immediately follow up on this. I know, it's been 3:30. So anyway, it's just disappointing, that's all it is. And so, yeah, I was being a little, I know I was being a little, you know, I had to be hyperbolic, you know, a little.
That's fine.
Because I wanted to make a point, and that point is that, you know, we should all be treated the same.
Thank you. Thank you for your public comment, appreciate it. Anyone else for public comment, items not on the agenda? Okay, we'll close public comment and move on to reports. We'll start with trustees. Trustee Reports, Trustee Ursick?
No report.
Trustee Albenson?
No report.
Trustee Myers?
No report.
Trustee Apitoff?
No report tonight.
Village Attorney?
No report tonight.
Village Manager?
No report this evening.
And I do not have a report either, so we'll move on to item six, Establishment of the Consent Agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove any item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve the final form of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And Rob, that's a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Manager Bayhand will read each item.
Thank you. Approval of the Village Council minutes for the August 5, 2025, Regular Meeting and Study Session and the August 19, 2025, Regular Meeting. Approval of the warrant list dated August 15, 2025 through August 28, 2025, in the amount of $2,061,090.30. Resolution Number R65, 2025, approving the purchase of a Freightliner 108 SD Plus Dump Truck from Trans Chicago Truck Group for adoption.
Thank you, Rob. May have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote.
So moved.
Second.
And Rob, that is a roll call vote.
Trustee Albenson?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Ursick?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes. Item eight, Ordinances and Resolutions. We have none, and we'll move on to item nine, which is our discussion items for tonight. And without objection, I'd like to move the discussion item on the scooters and so on, where is that? The e-bike and scooter regulations ahead of the budget policy direction. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And part of the reason for that is that we have some residents here that would like to make public comment on the scooters, and we'd like to get them in before they have to go get their children, from wherever the children are. So we're going to move on to the e-scooter regulations. Council will be provided information regarding the proposed regulation and permitted use of such devices. Police Chief Brian O'Connell is here to review. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, President Dearborn, Council. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present for consideration tonight. An ordinance regarding e-bikes, e-scooters, and other motor-driven vehicles. My goal tonight is to provide a presentation for all of you discussing the current law regulating these devices and other devices that we've typically seen in our community called e-motos or electric dirt bikes. Hopefully, my presentation will highlight the differences in these devices, explain the legal framework, and assist Village Council in consideration of the ordinance, which my hope is to promote safety and responsible operation. So technology, new technology has created a myriad of these ridable devices. Unfortunately, the technology is much further along than the current Illinois laws. Illinois law does not always regulate new devices in a timely manner here, so what you have seen across many villages is considering different ordinances in some type of regulation. Some of them you'll see are regulating individual types of devices, e-bikes and e-scooters. Some you'll see as regulating them as a whole, others in restricted areas in communities, and other ordinances are not being, or these ordinances aren't being considered by other communities and following Illinois law and the Illinois Vehicle Code. The Illinois Vehicle Code is quite complex when it comes to bikes under Chapter 15, or 15, so I'm going to highlight from a high level. If we have further questions about it, I'll be glad to answer them the best I can. But the most common devices that we're seeing in our community are the e-bikes, the e-scooters, and the e-motos. We'll get into that. So what is an e-bike? An e-bike includes motor assistance, which is less than 750 watts, equipped with fully operational pedals, and no driver's license is required. Just recently, in the beginning of this, of August, the definition of the e-bikes fell under the definition of bicycles. So what does that mean? They're allowed on the roadway, obeying all traffic laws, they're allowed on bike paths, they must have proper lighting, but the big difference here with this little subsection of the language is that they're not allowed on sidewalks. So on public roadways, bike paths, and proper lighting and equipment. This chart best kind of summarizes what you're seeing in Class 1, 2, and 3 e-bikes. I won't go into much detail, but in the chart, you'll see Class 1 and 2s primarily are the speed limit cap of 20 miles an hour with no age requirement. When you get up to a Class 3, which is a, which is designed to be a 28 mile an hour top speed, it does require an age of 16. So the Illinois Legislature attempted to regulate the electronic scooters with the passage of Public Act 103-0899 that went into effect in 2024. Basically, what this did, and I do not mean to make light of it or make a joke, but basically what this law did was regulate a children's toy. So when you see children riding Razor scooters primarily, the little tiny ones, that is the only law in Illinois that's currently regulated. So they have prohibited these 10 mile an hour max speed, they have to be 18 years old, they can drive on the sidewalks, and they're restricted to 35 miles per hour or higher roadways. What they did not do was regulate what we're currently seeing in our community is speeds of higher than that with higher speed or higher-powered electric scooters. What those are, if you're familiar with transportation apps like Lime, Vio, those are rental companies in the city of Chicago, these are what you're seeing that are going at a higher speed there that are not prohibited. And I just may took a quote from the Illinois Municipal League. If a municipality opts into a regulatory framework provided by this Public Act and authorizes the use of these low-speed electric scooters in specific areas within the jurisdiction, they may be subject to liability for injuries that occur. So as simple as I could make it here, on the left, that is what is currently illegal by the Public Act, and the max speed of a 50 mile per hour scooter under this act has no regulations to it, to the right. So other motor-driven vehicles, obviously, we just discussed Class 1, 2, and 3. To the right of those are two things that we're seeing a growing population in our community. These are the e-motos, the dirt bikes that you see, the, primarily the operators, although we're encouraged by people wearing helmets, of course, these are the ones that look more like dirt bikes, off-road vehicles that are driving through our community, and they do reach speeds, and this is not an exaggeration, of 40 to 60-plus miles an hour. Fully throttle, operational, typically these lack operational pedals, and this definition of other motor-driven vehicles, for your consideration, would also include the high-speed electric scooters. So when we get into this discussion, typically, the vehicles that drive this fast, that have this operation, under the Illinois Vehicle Code that's stated on the top of the thing, the screen, excuse me, is requiring a license plate, liability insurance, title, proper title, registration. Typically, with those vehicles, you'll see motorcycle class licenses, L or M, and they require headlights, brake lights, turn signals, mirrors, safety gear, et cetera. And with that, if they're properly registered and titled, obviously, you would have a licensed driver operating that. So the community and safety concerns. I can speak from personal experience. What we're seeing in our community are the operation of these at excessive speed. They are weaving through traffic, they are coming out of front yards into the roadway, ignoring traffic control signals, they're utilizing a full traffic lane. Under the bike, Illinois Vehicle Code for the bike definition, they're supposed to be to the right of the roadway, they are utilizing a full lane, sometimes even the left lane of Green Bay Road.
Sir, Chief Justin Clifford, are you talking here about moto bikes? Are you talking about all?
All of them.
Oh, okay.
We are seeing inexperienced, unlicensed drivers without proper safety gear. We are seeing devices that often lack the adequate lighting and signals, and, and of course, we've seen and had reports of some pretty close calls with pedestrians, specifically in our business district in the Green Bay Trail. To date, we've had just under a handful of vehicle accidents where the operator of that bike was primarily at fault. So just recently, we collected the data from the 2025 Weneka Caucus Annual Survey Results, and I apologize, it may be a little bit challenging to read, but I cut two pieces of that survey out for, for reference here. We asked about their interest, people's interest in rules related to, to this topic. Overwhelmingly, was very important, at 67% of the people surveyed, that they would like to see this considered. And then another big part of, of this is education at just over, excuse me, my eyes are getting bad, but just over 48%. So consideration of rules as well as educating the public, which I agree with. So for your consideration tonight, for discussion, things to address would be age requirements plus a driver's license that mirrors other municipalities that adopt similar language for their ordinances, specifically Deerfield, Highland Park, and Glencoe have similar ordinances regarding age and driver's license requirements. Identify prohibited areas if that needs to be considered, the Green Bay Trail, the Business District, sidewalks, village parks, et cetera. And when you talk about village parks, just a side note, we have responded to calls where these bikes have been used on the hills at Centennial, at Centennial Park, where the beach is, you know, that is a attractive place for these off-road dirt bikes to maneuver over those hills. We have been responding to those. Requiring safety gear, helmets, proper op, with proper operation, excuse me. Some discussion about parental responsibilities and accountability. You'll see in other ordinances, consideration for parental responsibility, I think there's an avenue to discuss with this when it comes to at-fault accidents. Obviously, you know, a minor or juvenile responsible for a car accident, this could be an opportunity to discuss that or utilize this. This wouldn't be a primary goal, but it is something to consider. Supervised use on the roadways for underage operators, something to consider, that even though we would be discussing prohibiting under a certain age, is there, is there a consideration that wants to be made that if they're under the supervision of their parents or an adult, proper use of that, that they may be allowed to utilize that in, in our ordinance? Consideration of an implementation date. Do we, do we want to consider this immediately, or do we want to allow time for education and community engagement? We have a great relationship with District 36, New Trir and the private schools, we could work with them on messaging. And my, my discussion here regarding a complete ban on the other motor-driven vehicles unless properly licensed and registered, these are personally my biggest concern of the topic, are these e-dirt bikes that are being utilized as such, off-road vehicles throughout our community. And then, of course, to end with associated fines for the observed violations that we would have. I, I am, I've stood, I've stood before you before, I am not in a position that I'm looking to have a heavy hand on this. I believe that education is important. We have done the same in other areas that council has considered regarding gas-powered leaf blowers and walk-your-bike, but that would also be something for your consideration this evening. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Why don't we start with questions for Chief O'Connell from the council members? Tina?
Sorry for being a little bit late. This morning at the chamber, there was a little bit of a robust discussion about this because members from Glencoe, I think the deputy manager from Glencoe and the Park District Director were there talking about this. One question I had, Glencoe's Park District has, was the first to ban it in their park properties. Do we know, does Weneka Park District also have a prohibition on any of these motorized vehicles within Park District?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, so that's something that we probably should tighten up. And then, this is more a comment rather than a question, but somebody had the great idea, since they seem to be a large population of, especially the dirt bike types at McDonald's, that that might be a great location for some education.
That's a good idea.
The Park District shared that they've been able to track, you know, anonymous data of kids going from the beach directly to McDonald's, and they think a lot of that is kids on motorized. I guess they're using some AI data to track usage. It's randomized, you know, anonymous, all privacy controlled, but they're seeing those patterns, and so I thought I would just share this, and, because at that intersection of Tower Road and Green Bay, there's a lot of violations, like kids doing wheelies all the time. So anyway, just thought I'd pass that on.
And if I could, I have reached out to the chiefs of the ordinances that I referenced earlier. They are very proactive in their approach of handing out flyers at the schools, talking to the students coming out at the end of the school day. They're taking a very proactive educational approach, trying to resolve it.
And then one item that you may have covered, but apparently, some parents are disabling the controls that limit the speeds. And that was a report that was shared by many people around the table, so I don't know if that's something that we're seeing, and so I think the education on the parent's side is also important.
So I don't know the specifics of the technology, but I am aware of their, the bikes' ability to be increased or altered, and that would put a strain on us as the police department to try to identify what that increase was, but yes, that, we are seeing bikes at a higher speed.
And that, and prohibition of that is in the regulations that other communities have in that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Trustee Myers?
Question, you did say that the smaller Razor scooters that are motorized are regulated, right? What's, what's the current penalty that we have if a, if an individual is violating any of those regulations?
So the only one that we could enforce is what you mentioned, and this is why the law is not, I, not preferred to enforce, is because you would have, you literally would arguably be citing a 13-year-old on a traffic ticket, or a 12-year-old or a 10-year-old. It's, it's just not what we do.
Yeah.
And it's not in the spirit of enforcing and, and traffic court. It's just not ideal for us.
And that's a situation I assume you want to try and avoid even if we were to enhance the regulations, because there are young kids on many of these devices.
A, a big part of this would be the, the police and parent partnership and education and calling them and, and having discussions about the context we have and furthering that education hopefully at home with parents.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yeah, this is, we've covered a lot of topics in the last, in my five-plus years in this caucus, and the trustee is a trustee of the village, and this is a hot button. I have heard unsolicited from people at the Cubs game, to other communities, to parents with small children that have been hit, to what I've seen, as you, people just going across Rosewood, right through Elm, without, I mean, they're just not, the, the, the parents are, as I'm seeing, very upset by this, but people from other communities, and I, as I started getting approached, I started approaching other people, and it, this is really a hot button, because it will end in tragedy, as we are seeing right now. And that's what, what I think worries so many, so many parents that even don't buy these bikes, is that their kids are going to get in somebody else's bike, because as kids do, and follow them right down the way, and that, I, I guess I'm, as I'm, my question to you, I'm trying not to make a statement, how are your officers, if we kind of say, "Well, this one's okay, but this one's not okay," how are they going to police that, to say, "Well, that's a, you know, have to tailor everybody that has a, you know, one might be good, and one might be bad." Would you rather have a clear rule that takes onus off your officers of trying to figure this out?
I would prefer, I would prefer for our police department and the officers that have been asked to, to address this have some uniformity in our approach.
Okay. Trustee Albenson?
How does the proposed ordinance address the slide you showed with the pink scooter and the high-performance scooter? How does this ordinance respond to that discrepancy in the state law?
Yeah, it would be defined under other motor vehicles and those devices.
So an e-scooter of, with any electric motor capability would essentially be banned in our village?
Yes, and, well, unless you're 18 years old, under the Illinois Vehicle Code, yes.
Unless you're, so they're not banned, it's the driver has an age restriction?
That's correct. That's what the Illinois Vehicle Code states now.
But we would change that, or we would?
No, we would allow that at 18, with the age restrictions.
Right now, this, help me understand, the state is at the age of 18?
With the low-powered electric scooter.
Low-power electric, okay.
With the low-speed electric scooter.
So that's already addressed at the state level?
It is.
Okay. So that's just an enforcement issue?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
But they're silent on the high-powered ones.
There is nothing written about.
The high-powered ones have no regulations, no age limits, no locations.
So does the classification, the Class 1, 2, 3, apply to e-scooters, or is it, is it generic to any motorized vehicle?
They're, 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 they're defined in the ordinance as electric bikes, and then other motor-driven vehicles would be a collection of the other things that we're trying to focus our regulations on.
On the slide where you had the different classes, the Class 1, the Class 2, the Class That's basically bicycles, not scooters.
Correct.
Okay, so, so scooters don't have a Class 1, 2, 3?
They do not.
Correct.
Sorry if I misunderstood you.
And so what we're saying is that if you have an e-scooter, it doesn't matter if it's the little pink thing or that, that big black thing, you have to be age 18, and it has to be registered as a motor vehicle, like you would a moped or something?
Well, the, no, the e-scooters don't have to be registered, because they're under a certain wattage, okay? But this, the low-speed electric scooter and the high-speed electric scooter would be- be covered under our ordinance and definition. And then the e-bikes are under a different definition in our ordinance.
So just?
And then, and yes, I'm sorry, to, to address your question, it would be 18 plus a driver's license.
18 plus a driver's license, if I had, if, if someone met those two criteria, they could use an e-scooter in our village?
That's correct.
Regardless of how fast it goes, or?
Yes.
Would have to be low speed?
No.
Okay.
Are you aware of how the reception has gone to the other communities that have implemented these laws? Can you fill us in?
So I have, have spoken with the other police chiefs, and they have seen a dramatic decrease in the presence of these in their community once the ordinance has been signed. And so, and I believe that that, that is not only because of the ordinance, but because of the law, the police department and the community's efforts to educate once it was implemented.
And are you aware of what the community feedback is? Like, I feel like Highland Park passed one, and then there was some feedback, and they were deciding whether to withdraw it while they figured out how to tweak it, and then they maybe tweaked it a little, but it's still active? Like, what's going on in the communities?
So there, the, the majority of it has been positively received. There obviously is always some people that disagree, but it's not the majority, is from what I've been hearing, is that the majority is positive in regards to regulations.
I had one more. You made a statement, Chief, about in certain situations, a municipality could be liable. Could you elucidate, clarify that?
So, this is from the Illinois Municipal League. What, what they're saying is, is that if you allow the use of the low-speed electric scooter, the Razor, the kids' toy, if you allow it in, in dis, complete disregard of the, of the public act, you are, you could be held liable for any injuries that are sustained while someone is riding that low-powered scooter.
In an unauthorized area.
So, so if we were silent on low-speed scooters, we would be opening ourselves up?
No, not silent, if you completely disregarded the regulations that are in place with the state.
Okay.
If you allowed it.
We, we allowed it, or we did not enforce?
Correct. It's already in place through the Illinois Vehicle Code or through this public act, and we, that is a good position to be, but if, if there was a decision made by a municipality to?
We're a home rule, we don't want any regulations.
Correct. You could be held liable.
Okay.
Chief, let me ask you one question here. The, the Glencoe ordinance, how, how is what you're thinking different in what respects to the Glencoe ordinance? Because there would be some logic, I think, to marry the two, certainly as it relates to Green Bay Trail and people coming from one community to the other, you could argue the same for Kettleworth or Willmette, but how, how are we different? Peter, you may know the answer on this, too.
Chief probably knows a better one.
Okay, the chief knows better than you? I thought you?
And we can, we can prepare a comparison, there's some differences.
Okay.
So I'm in support of how they define the devices.
Okay.
Glencoe's, and, and they're all very similar, they're all very similar. Deerfield, Highland Park, and Glencoe are very similar. What I think is, just let me find my notes.
Because Glencoe was not in the spreadsheet, I don't think. They just did it under, understood, yeah.
Their exemptions are, are fewer.
For example, what does that mean?
Meaning from, as compared to Deerfield, they have less exemptions. So Glencoe's exemptions are the use from public bodies, us, the village, to an employee of the local government, a person operating the vehicle has a valid driver's license, and then they allow motorized wheelchairs and toy vehicles, as compared to other exemptions where they allow operation under supervised, under supervision with an adult.
And, and you're, you're suggesting that as an exemption?
Well, I, I think, I, I do have an understanding and appreciation that these are in our community already. I do hope that this is a public-private partnership, and if, I, I, I do appreciate that if a father and son want to go get ice cream and, and it's being driven correctly, it's something for, I would, I would ask to consider.
Mm-hmm.
But Glencoe does not allow that.
How about the Green Bay Trail? Are we banning these on the Green Bay Trail, e-bikes and scooters?
It's for your consideration, but yes.
Is that your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. And commercial districts?
Yes.
So going up to Graders, is that a problem with an e, an e-bike?
It would be.
Okay, okay. All right.
And in the ordinance, the recommendation is under 16.
So it's 16 plus, plus a driver's license for the electric bikes?
Yeah.
18 plus a driver's license, from a high level, 18 plus a driver's license?
For the e-moto.
For the e-scooters.
Yeah.
And then a complete ban on the e-motos.
Okay.
But if a family who has e-bikes with adult supervision wants to go to Graders on their e-bikes with their kids, if their parents are with them, that would not be a violation, even though they're under the age of 16?
Correct.
Right.
If, that's correct. That's an exemption that some municipalities have.
Right.
Are we recommending that?
Well, but you said, but it's also not allowed in the business district, and Graders is in the business district, so I think? Yeah, I think that's got to be clarified.
But it would be allowed if you're 16 plus?
Oh, that's what I was.
A driver's license, right.
It's not a complete ban.
On, on the public roadway.
On the roadway.
On the public roadway. There's a clarification there. If I didn't make that, I apologize. But nothing allowed on the sidewalks regardless. That would include our business district. If you are 16 plus a driver's license, or 18 plus a driver's license, that would be allowed on the roadway.
Okay. I know you mentioned that we would need to figure out how we enforce this, but have you discussed with your team, how would we enforce this? How do we determine who's under 16? When are we making stops? And not just within the village, but the Green Bay Trail, which is a bike path, which is a little bit of an oxymoron here. If people are unaware of our community regulations and they're coming from Evanston and they're going up to Highland Park, I mean, we're going to do, you know, pull everybody that comes through? I mean, what, what are the thoughts on ensuring enforcement?
Well, my, my hope would be is that we see the same type of response that these other municipalities have seen in the dramatic decrease in them. So what you're seeing now, I don't envision us having to enforce. And I don't think that we come out of the gate enforcing, unless the behavior is, is so dangerous that it, that it needs to be addressed in that, in that way. There's tremendous value in education, I believe in it, and our conversations with, with these juveniles would be, yes, they would be on the street, but the first thing that we would do is we would involve the parents in that conversation. Would they have to walk them home? Yes. Would the parents be notified? Yes. They, they in theory can be entered into our system if we decided that we wanted to not only implement this immediately and try to address the concerns, but also give time for education. If we're able to enter them into our system and they get flagged with a warning, we can, we can do those things. And it's a lot of work on our end, but I understand the value in trying to balance that worry of enforcement, being heavy-handed, and, and trying to educate the community on this.
But just to be clear on that, the, the police officers are not going to look at a, a juvenile on a scooter and pull them, if they're, oh, they might be 17, they might be 18, we're not really sure, they're not going to, unless there's a violation, you're not going to act on that scooter rider, I assume.
I'm not going to ask my police officers to make a judgment call on, on how old they are with, with, obviously, if a 12-year-old is on a scooter?
Yeah.
That, that's, that's pretty, that's a pretty safe assumption to make.
But it's basically, you're acting on violations.
We are. I, I think we have to address the dangerous behavior that we're seeing present right now.
Okay. Why don't, we'll bring this back up, but why don't we open this up for public comment? For, would anyone in the public like to speak on this issue? Please come forward and give us your thoughts. Pam, would you like to come up? Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, President Dearborn and trustees, staff, chief, thank you very much for having this discussion. My name is Pam Faulkner. I own Green Bay Cycles in Hubbard Woods. Thank you for addressing this issue. Over the past year or so, we have all seen with rising concern, the increasing prevalence of a specific type of motorized vehicle that's being operated primarily by adolescents in Winnetka and surrounding communities. My bike shop sells electric bikes that fall into the Class 1, 2, and 3, very rarely in the Class 2, or primarily the Class 1 and 3 store, in addition to our acoustic bikes. We, I frequently ride one myself, and my daughters use what are referred to as long-tail e-bikes to take their children to school. The products we sell and service all adhere to the standards established by the bicycle industry to fall into the, the three classifications that have already been discussed. They have motors of less than 750 watts. All electric bicycles must have their classification clearly marked on the frame of the bike. If that marking is not there, if it does not say Class 1, Class 2, Class 3, that bike is what is referred to, generally speaking, as an out-of-class electric vehicle, OCEV. That is a common industry term for bikes that fit into that 750 watts and above bike. It is not a bike at all, let's be clear. It is a dirt bike, it is a motocross bike, but it is not a bicycle. The OCEVs that we should be addressing do not, as the chief said, have a good definition currently in Illinois Vehicle Code. As a business owner in this industry, I would offer the following insights and recommendations. E-bikes that fall into the three classes provide those who need or desire it, and by need, I mean those people who for a variety of reasons do not have a driver's license, are not comfortable having a driver's license. I have a young work, man who works for me, he's on the Asperger's syndrome, spectrum. He will never want to have a driver's license. He uses an e-bike. He's 28 years old. Just so we're clear, that being 16 or having a driver's license should not be the qualifier here. We need to be aware that there are people who utilize these vehicles specifically because they don't have a driver's license. But those people who need it or desire it, it provides an alternative to the use of a car. In addition to being a recreational vehicle, it gets used for primary transportation. We have seen an increase in the past several years in those riders who have embraced e-bikes as a lifestyle choice, and we should encourage anything that reduces the negative impact of automobile usage on local traffic, infrastructure, and the environment. Our customers who buy e-bikes use them to access all aspects of our community, including our parks, our beaches, our schools, our stores, and our restaurants, and we should not be creating barriers to those opportunities. I reviewed the Deerfield ordinance that was provided with tonight's agenda, and I noticed a couple of things. In Sub B, Sub 6, it indicates that no more than one person may ride on a motor-driven vehicle at any time. That would appear to restrict the use of long-tail or cargo e-bikes, which are intended to carry passengers, specifically children, and are frequently used to transport children to schools in our communities. Similarly, the restriction described in Sub C, Sub 1, prohibiting the use of motor-driven vehicles on public sidewalks, village-owned bike paths, village-owned parks, and village-owned parking lots, would restrict the use of low-speed e-bikes like longtails and cargo bikes, as well as individually-driven e-bikes, from being used to access our local beaches, schools, and parks, as well as our businesses. I'm sure that that would not be the intent of the ordinance, but it is the example of the type of unintended consequence that can result from using too broad a brush to address a fine-line problem. With the rise in popularity of the OCEVs, Green Bay Cycles and shops in the surrounding communities saw a precipitous drop in the sale of traditional bikes to adolescent boys.
Hey Pam?
Yes, sir.
Can you wrap this up pretty quick?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we limit this to three minutes.
No problem. That trend has begun to reverse, as we've seen communities begin to address and enforce the use of OCEVs. I would recommend that you look to the website, rideillinois.org. They have an excellent section titled Guidance for Municipalities, which provides both a fulsome analysis of current statutes and definitions of a variety of e-mobility devices, as well as a thoughtful set of recommendations for consideration. In closing, I would implore you not to create an environment hostile to the, to the responsible use of e-bikes currently being exercised by the vast majority of riders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Sure.
Anyone else would like to speak on this topic? Is Kim coming back?
She had to pick someone up.
Oh, nuts. Okay. Okay, would you like to speak? Come on. Introduce yourself and tell us your thoughts.
Hi, I'm Catherine Martin. I was not planning to speak, so I apologize for my, what I'm about to say, but I have five children, two 11-year-olds, two 13-year-olds, one 15-year-old. My 11-year-old son is one of his only friends who does not have a electric scooter. When I drive my kids to school every day, I am terrified that I'm going to hit someone. I would encourage you all to just drive to Skokie School in the morning, and you will, you will experience that. And then, my 15-year-old just started driver's ed, and I am terrified for her. Kids are flying out, not everyone has a helmet on, and nobody's stopping, as you know. So I, I fully respect e-bikes for adults, but for, especially the scooters is what I'm seeing with my children, I have a lot of concerns about those. So I just hope we can make some policies before something terrible happens.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to speak on this topic? Okay, with that, we'll close public comment, bring it back here. Chief and, or, I don't know, Peter, do you have anything to add on this? Okay. So, we need to provide Chief O'Connell and staff and our village attorney with some policy direction on how we'd like to move on this. And I don't know, Chief, if you have specific issues that you would like us to provide that, that direction on? You mentioned timing, if we do an ordinance?
Yeah, consider, yes, consideration of timing. You know, there, there, this is happening now and school year is upon us. Education would have to take place right away, or the consideration of implementing this post-January 1, where we have the opportunity to collaborate with the school districts in New Trir and begin working on messaging. That would be one area there.
Do people have thoughts on timing on this? If we were to introduce an ordinance, approve an ordinance, would you like it to take effect immediately? Would you like it to phase in with some education and then enforcement?
Bob, I think this is a safety issue. I mean, if it's another, it's, it's one thing if you're looking at, you know, electric lines and, and plumbing, you, you can hear the parent, I've heard it from a ton of young people whose kids that have had near misses on these, with people on these e-bikes. So I'm not sure, on a safety issue, why, I mean, I think we're going to do this, we do it.
Thoughts?
I wanted to just give a thought, because it's funny, because I've gone back and forth and back on this issue, just in general. I know it's not the timing question, but I think I'm back again. But we did the 2040 plan, and it came up, this has been a topic that people all the time are talking about, and, you know, just your neighbors, oh, we've got to do something, we've got to do something. And I was fully on board with that. And then when I talked to the chief, I was not crazy about the idea of kids being stopped and having negative interactions with the police. And then I, I also am cognizant of the parents that have bought these for their kids and the people that are using them responsibly. However, after today, and seeing with the caucus how many people want the regulation, and the letter from the neurosurgeon and the parent? and the letter from the neurosurgeon and the parent, I'm back thinking that we should probably do something. I would say without qualification, I'd have no problem just banning the motorbikes, the e-moto bikes, not the electric bicycles, but the e-moto bikes. Like, those sound like a kind of a menace. But I do think we should, I'm back to thinking that we should implement something with lighter direction, and then, as Rob was saying, I'm not sure why we'd wait. Initially, I thought, wait till January to give people time, but we wouldn't be doing anything tonight. So there are people will have time to react to this, and it sounds like Glencoe and Highland Park have not had too negative of reactions, and that the parents, that people are generally more relieved.
For the record, I believe that the idea is with policy direction, you might come back next week with an ordinance. So there's not a lot of time.
It gives people a week to come in and talk if they want to.
And I think a lot of people saw from the, you know, the weekly email that it was going to be on the agenda today. It was a lot of discussion at the farmer's market on Saturday. So I think people are aware. And I think, you know, so long as they have, to your point, at least a week or two of My concern is the unintended consequences on e-bikes, because I think that that is a really good point, that that, you know, and I would like to know more about, like, I don't think you can just hop on an e-bike. It's not like a motorcycle, right? You have to have some pedaling action, right? You have to have that to have it to go.
I have, I have three of them.
Okay.
It's a lever.
Okay.
In many cases.
I was going to say, it depends on the class.
Some are, some do have.
That's only Class 2.
Yep.
Right, and so maybe we're, we, you know, I think Pam's comments were very well taken. Would you mind putting those, submitting those in writing? Because I think that's helpful. But, you know, is there a way to say, you know, because there is potentially, I've heard from parents that people who are 16 and they still don't have their license, but they do need to get to practice, you know, whatever, you know, is it something to consider? Because really what the big infraction here is these, these motorbikes that are really dirt bikes and the e-scooters. I think those are the two biggest concerns, I think. I have, I don't think I've seen anybody.
Okay, so you're fine with the e-scooter 18-year-old with a driver's license regulation, essentially? Banned on the Green Bay Trail, banned in commercial districts?
Yeah. Well, I do question why 18 and not 16? Is it just to align with state law? Is that?
I would, I would assume so. Could I, could I make one comment on what you, and to Pam's comments earlier? I, a lot of valid things spoken to about that. My, my belief is, is the reason why it's 16 plus a driver's license, the spirit of that, is that when you apply and you go through the process of getting a driver's license, you become further educated. You, you take the course, you take the test, you familiarize with the rules of the road. For the definition with the electric bikes, the only exception is that they're not allowed on the sidewalk. Bicycles are allowed on the sidewalk and have to yield the right of way to pedestrians. These are prohibited on the sidewalks and have to use the roadway. So I believe that the spirit of why it's incorporating a driver's license is because of that. I do sympathize with, I do understand the story that was told here, but I believe that is the spirit of why you're seeing the 16 and attachment with a driver's license, just for more familiarity with the rules of the road.
But just remember, I think at the age of 18 or 21, you don't have to take driver's ed.
You do not.
Right. So then there's this whole, I mean, you know.
Well, again.
You still have to take a driver's test.
But Pam's employee is not going to be pulled over.
No.
On his e-bike.
No.
Unless he's a violator of the rules of the road.
I get that.
Yeah.
But I guess I, I think, I think we can, my only concern is I don't want to chill responsible use of safe e-bikes, Class 1 and Class 3, it sounds like. When I think the, I'm always concerned about overregulation, but I guess where I think the real issue is for sure, we need to have, on the timing issue, immediate action on the scooters and the motorbikes.
Okay. Go ahead, Scott.
No, that's it.
Bob, did you?
No, I, I guess I'm trying to get something clean for the police. I mean, they have other duties to, to work on, and I, you know, I think there is an age limit. I think there's a reason why people operate cars not until 16, and that's what I've heard the parents say. You have, you have people that are at Nutria, and I've seen, they've been doing popping wheelies in front of my car down the middle of Elm Street, and multiple, and it is now the thing. And there's a reason why they're, you know, you're right, you're right. Some will do it responsibly, but if you hear the parents, if you talk to the majority of the parents, they're scared to death that their kids that are 16 or 17 driving a car are going to run into something, or they are going to run into something. So I've been looking for something that's cleaner for the police to say, gee, is that a Class 1 or a Class 3? Or is, it just, it just seems it needs to be a simpler, I'm not trying to chill it either, but there's a reason why kids can't drive motorized vehicles until they're 16 years old.
Okay, my only point is, I think you're not going to see as much on the e-bikes just because their cost, I mean, they're much more expensive, you know, vehicle than the e-scooters. I think that's why we're seeing so many of these kids use it. I mean, I could be persuaded either way. I just, I think we can take, I'd be all support for immediate action on the e-scooters and the e-motos, if that's what we're calling them, or anything that's an out-of-class electric vehicle, but I want to make sure we're not overreacting on the e-bikes, which I haven't really seen anybody, you know, misuse that. And I do think Pam's comments about the longtail and the cargo bikes is something, because there's three people in my neighborhood that have these that take their kids everywhere in them, and I don't think I would do that, but I also don't want to prohibit them from using that.
Although the drivers of the longtails are over 18.
Yeah.
So they're not prohibited.
Right, right.
And I would just add one more thing. I think the spirit of that language, too, is, is to avoid prohibit the dual riding, the inappropriate riding of those, where the bikes that were described are designed to carry additional people. That would not be in the spirit of what I'd be focused on here.
Right, because we've all seen, yeah, I think we're trying to get at the, what I see every morning, you know, three, two girls on a scooter flying down to Starbucks, right? I think that's to your point.
Okay. Scott?
So I lump the e-moto and the e-scooters in one bucket, which is, as quickly as possible, we should pass an ordinance, it should be implemented immediately, and the police have the, you know, have the training to talk to and instruct people appropriately. It's a relatively small number relative to, I think, e-bikes, but it is the most dangerous, I think, in terms of, you know, improper use. So I would be in favor of, if you came back next week with an ordinance, it's, you know, we look at it, we approve it, and it takes effect immediately. I am thinking that a January 1 implementation for e-bikes is more appropriate, because we want to limit the number of engagements between police and minors. And there are, I think, there's an opportunity there for more training and education that can take place in the schools. I think there are fewer abuses on the e-bikes. I think, you know, while the spirit is, I think we all know the spirit in terms of the longtails and allowing people to go down to the beaches with their kids, we want to make sure that the law is written to reflect that spirit. And we may have some refinements next week on that that we want to go through. I would not want to hold up the e-moto and e-scooter ordinance next week, because I think that's pretty clear-cut. I think we're all pretty much in agreement. We've seen it personally, we've heard it from our neighbors. So I know we don't necessarily want to have two ordinances, but I'm just wondering whether we should have one ordinance on motor, e-motos and scooters next week. It's clean, we address it, and then the other, the e-bikes, we have a chance, and maybe we approve them both next week, right? But I think there may be a little bit more debate here in terms of timing. I would be more in favor of January 1 for that. I think it sounds like Tina would be. So, you know, I don't know if that's a possibility.
A village attorney? Can that be built into an ordinance?
To do two different ordinances?
No, to do an, an ordinance that incorporated two, two different.
Some of the divisions would not affect until January.
Correct.
Or I'm actually even saying, maybe, Bob, two, two ordinances.
Right.
Two, two separate ordinances.
Because it doesn't necessarily end up as, I mean, there are different sections of the program, or they could be the same section.
But, but, but could you bring an ordinance on the e-bikes that would be effective January 1 next week?
Correct.
And there would be an education component to it for three and a half months?
I would, I think what I'm saying, just so everyone's clear on what I'm suggesting is, both ordinance could be presented to us next week, but they would be two separate ordinances.
Correct.
We might agree on both of them. We may have some refinements on the bikes.
You're suggesting the e-bike ordinance would take into account some of these nuances.
Right, right.
And would not be effective. It may be effective immediately, but it may be an education component for three and a half months.
Yeah. And the other point. Then enforcement. But I'm. The other, sorry, the other point I was going to make on the e-bikes, I want to make sure that we are in alignment with Glencoe and Kenilworth and Willmet and Highland Park in terms of the Green Bay Trail.
Yes.
Right? Because if the concern is speed, I myself have ridden my bike at a pretty high speed on Green Bay Trail.
Your normal bike?
Yeah, my normal bike. I don't have any.
Right, right, right.
So I, you know, I, I don't want to get in a situation where people are avoiding Winnetka, or it's very confusing that way. Glencoe allows it, but Kenilworth does.
We should be in line with Glencoe, certainly.
Yeah, I think we want it to be so people can use the trail, you know, without any worry.
I think there are signs down on the trail right now, no motorized vehicles.
I'd have to confirm.
I'm, I'm pretty sure.
I think you're right.
There are. But, but anyway, we should be in line, and I think our village attorney can check on that.
Can I offer a couple of comments here?
Okay, Kirk, go ahead.
Because I'm going to be somewhat of a dissenter on everything that's been said.
Sure.
I have concerns about what's being proposed. Chief knows this, chief and I talked. I feel like this is way too broad, or it feels like it's a, whatever, a sledgehammer when we need a little bit of a scalpel. And I think it comes down to, we've got three different things we're trying to solve with one ordinance, and I'm trying to maybe simplify it in my own head. We've got the e-scooter issue, we've got e-bikes, and we have these e-motos. And from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, chief and council, the e-motos right now, we don't need to technically do anything to enforce those. Is that correct? Because they don't fall in Class 1, 2, or 3, and unless they're registered, like you would a moped or a motorcycle, they're not permitted. Is that correct?
That's not, that's not true. There's nothing defined in our Illinois Vehicle Code about this new device yet.
So that, okay, so, but I think, I want to come back to that. I think my reaction to this is, I feel like we're, well, before I make that statement, I agree with the concerns about safety. I, as probably, with most of the residents in the community have seen, especially around Washburn and Skokie, kids coming into, going to and from school on scooters, no helmets, you know, like literally.
Two kids on a scooter.
10, 12-year-old girls whizzing down Hibbard. I mean, it's kind of like insane. But at the same token, I feel like with trying to put all this in a simple ordinance, we are inadvertently going to be punishing the majority of families that have invested significantly into e-bikes in our community.
How are we going to punish them?
Well, here, so let's.
Because they can, if we make, we can say they can ride with their family, I think that's fine.
I, I think there's nuances, the way it's written right now, that is unfairly pushed against families with e-bikes. So just to cover a couple of highlights that Pam pointed out, whatever, the long-tail bikes, essentially, right now, we're saying those aren't allowed, and maybe that's an easy fix that we can all address now, right? With the intended, that provision was written with the intent of those 12-year-old girls that are doubling up going down Hibbard Road on a e-scooter. But why are we now going to lump in a long-tail bike? And those are beautiful, wonderful bikes. I mean, you go into Europe, and it's like, that is like a car in, you know, places like Amsterdam or Belgium. They're wonderful. They're great, and I would hope more families wouldn't want to invest in those in our community. But the way it's written right now, obviously, we're going to, we're going to prohibit that. I know that's an easy fix.
We're going to prohibit it for a certain age group.
But, okay, let's say you have.
But would you?
Can I go along with you, Kirk, here in a second? Let's say you have a teenage boy or girl in the summertime, has a babysitting job, and is taking kids on an e-bike to the beach, and they put them in the cargo trailer, okay? You know, is all of a sudden a 15-year-old being put in a situation where they're doing something technically illegal? Yes, the police may see them operating it very fairly and maybe the, but we're creating a situation where now the police officer has to make a decision. Is this, so I guess I'm kind of going, but I, not to put words in your mouth, but I hear you kind of saying, why don't we split these two? Bikes is one ordinance, e-motos and scooters is a different ordinance.
Yeah, and I, when you were making your comment about breaking things up, I, I feel the same way. I feel like we're trying to, because they're electric motor-operated, we're throwing these three different categories into one bucket, and I don't think that's fair. I think we should address, I think we should address each of them individually. And first, I would say if there is no state rule about e-motos, like, that's something I would be in favor of tonight, or maybe come back next week. I mean, let's get that done. I mean, I've, I took a picture two, three weeks ago at McDonald's. There literally is a gang of probably a dozen 14-year-old boys that have these e-motos, and then they bring their, their big battery packs into McDonald's to charge them. I mean, it's pretty amazing. And I, I've seen the wheelies, I've, you know, I've seen it, like, doing the, whatever, 40 miles an hour on Sheridan. It's pretty, and I would say that we need to separate from the 12-year-old girls riding the scooters, right? Significant safety issues, but we're talking different issues that we need to address with a scalpel instead of the sledgehammer. The, the e-bike thing, I want to treat on its own, because I think that is something that we as a community should be promoting. And I, I do question, I brought this up with the chief when we talked, I'm like, so you have multiple states out there? I did a quick Google search today, and there are at least a half dozen states nationally that are at the state level offering financial incentives to promote their entire state, millions of people, to go buy e-bikes. And what makes us a town of 12,000 people so different that now we're going to go in and say, well, we're going to, we're going to try to clamp down on the use of e-bikes? We should be out there promoting the use of e-bikes.
First of all, there's no, we're at a certain age. I love e-bikes. I own e-bikes. I wouldn't want my 12-year-old flying through on 30 miles an hour or 25 miles an hour on e-bike and just feeling a little, at 12 years old, they're not, there's a reason they're not driving cars at 12. They're not fully formed.
I think we need to think more thoughtfully about what this ordinance is. I mean, we're, essentially, we're saying, if you have an e-bike, now you have to go, if you want to go from Elm District up to Hubbard Woods, you've got to ride on Green Bay with cars doing 35, 40 miles an hour, even if you're 16 or 18 and you meet, I mean, it's like, is that really the safe option? I don't know, but I'm like, or the idea of a bike path prohibiting the use of e-bikes seems contrary to what logic would want. And then I'm thinking, well, then how are we going to enforce what happens on the Green Bay Trail? And we could say, oh, we're not going to enforce that, but the reality is, if we have an ordinance without teeth, then what's the point? And then it gets down to, you know, the other big question is, how do we actually enforce this? I think we need to not just have an ordinance, but we need to actually have a game plan on what we're going to do for enforcement to ensure compliance, and not just make lip service to it, but I think we should actually be diligent, say, well, here's, and chief, you, you and your team probably have ideas, but how are we actually going to make that determination? What's going to be the consequence? Are we really going to walk the kids home if they're two miles from their house and wait for their parents to come home? I mean, what are we going to do?
The consequence to the, to the enforcement part of it is, it mirrors the other ordinances at administrative hearing that we have now. It could either be decided that we can write and issue a fine, and that fine is a dollar amount that you can decide, or we have an administrative hearing process where they attend an administrative hearing every month, and they can attend that with a parent. That's how we handle other juvenile administrative hearing violations. So we have those options in place now.
I, I feel like we need to be more clear about not just differentiating between these three different categories, but that we need to really work on the details. I believe that we, safety is a paramount issue, but I don't believe that us hastily making a decision tonight is going to make the situation better. I believe we should.
Can I get out of order for one second? Pam, would you like to make one last comment?
I just wanted to say, I live in Highland Park, so I've read their statute.
Come on up.
I've read.
So people watching at home can hear you.
Sorry.
Expert testimony.
I, I live in Highland Park, so I've read their ordinance, and I've now read the Deerfield ordinance that was provided. Neither one of them provide the age exemption information. So when you read them, it's a blanket, blanket prohibition against riding an e-bike on the Green Bay Trail. It is a blanket prohibition against riding e-bikes on city streets. So it's not like they're looking at it and saying, oh, if you're over 18, you can do it and it's fine. No, it's a blanket prohibition.
Okay.
And that's what I'm hoping we can avoid.
Yeah. Chief, just hang on a second. Chief, I think we're going through a direction here, and I want to get your thoughts on this.
Something to say, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Peter, double-check, I don't believe that's accurate. I believe they're prohibited on the roadway with 16-plus a driver's license on any public roadway. And there are specific provisions, prohibited areas in ordinances that are listed, yes. But 16-plus a driver's license, 18-plus a driver's license are allowed on the roadway.
And, I mean, the.
Peter, can you turn your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry. To say that in reverse, it is unlawful for any person under the age of 16. This is not our ordinance. This is Glencoe's, right?
Right. If you are 16-plus.
If you are under the age of 16 or who don't possess a driver's license, it's unlawful for you to operate a motor-driven vehicle upon public streets, parks, et cetera.
Correct. But if you are 16-plus with a driver's license for an e-bike, or 18-plus a driver's license for a scooter.
Correct.
You are allowed on the roadway.
Correct.
And if I could just add one more thing respectfully, I think, just for consideration and discussion, is when you begin to separate them in this way regarding possibly considering an age allowance, or what that is, we are, what we are possibly doing is putting an underage child on the roadway. So, right now, an underage child, an under 16, is allowed to ride their bicycle on the sidewalk. That's good. If we're going to make any type of exception here, we would be putting that underage child on the roadway. And that is fairly a concern of mine.
As it should be. And we are responsible for safety in the community. And as Bridget said, look at the people who responded to the survey. This isn't a 50-50. This is over 80% said it was somewhat or very important to get regulations on this. So I agree with being thoughtful, absolutely. But at some point, I think we, I'm not trying to blanket everything in, but I do think there is an age limit. And except for family, I think that makes sense. And I don't want to keep a family from riding together. I think that's great. But I do think there, as we've seen, 80% of the people, you don't get that about anything in this community.
But I think, you know, it's all about how the survey question is asked. I think there's an immediate, I just want to make sure we're not rushing to judgment on the e-bike component, because I have not heard of any e-bike accidents. I don't know if they've had them, and maybe we have the data, you know. I just don't know. And I feel like, I don't know what the industry recommends, you know. Maybe the industry recommends 16 and up, and that's fine. I know when you, you know, we wanted to do a backroads trip, and my daughter wanted an e-bike, she couldn't get one until she was 16. So maybe there is a standard out there. It seems like I just would feel that, given, you know, the pressing issue seems to be scooters and e-motos or OCVs, that we focus on that. And then if we have, if we break them up, if we, you know, if we don't have everything that we think we want, we can move other things forward that are a critical need. I just personally don't think that the survey response was talking about e-bikes.
I think it was scooters.
I'd ask the chief about that. I mean, as far as what you're seeing out there.
It wasn't broken out.
Rules related, are rules regulated important to e-bikes, e-scooters, and other, and motorized, under 18 vehicles?
Right. So, but it's not like we said, how do you feel about e-bikes? How do you, you know, it was a lumped-in question. So I just don't.
Yeah. We may not have unanimity here, but I do think there's some appetite for bringing the e-moto and the e-scooter ordinance to us. Let's keep that moving along here.
Yep.
If we could. And maybe take a crack, based on this discussion, add an e-bike separate ordinance of some sort. And, you know, we can review it, look at it, discuss it, amend it, whatever. But I think we should move on the scooters and the motos.
Yes.
Kirk, you may not agree with that. I understand. It may be a sledgehammer. But I think there's general consensus to consider having something come back to us pretty quickly.
I'm fine with that, but I believe, I'm convicted, that we need to also have enforcement addressed as well.
Okay.
Because it's going to have no teeth. It's just going to be in name only.
No, there will be enforcement. I think there will be.
But I'd like to understand what that enforcement plan is, because the e-motos, I would say, blanket, let's get that done. I have no concerns about that. If there's a hole in the state law or that's unregulated, let's regulate that. But let's not, you know, throw the 60 mile an hour e-motos. Let's differentiate between that and the 12-year-olds running the scooters to and from school.
Okay, Chief, is it possible to put together a review of what the enforcement plan would be on the scooters?
Sure, I will. Just, every incident is a case-by-case basis upon what our observations are. And I, like I said earlier, my hope would be to get this partnership with the parents and educate. But there are rules in place, there are options in place to enforce it now. I just want you to know that.
I think, just to add, while I encourage us to move quickly on the e-motos, I believe patience and doing this thoughtfully will be helpful, and it will benefit the families that have invested in these technologies or these modes of transportation for their families. We have the winter.
I would only say those on that, Kirk. And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that you have been reviewing this issue for months on end on a regional basis with other departments. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
This is not an impromptu ordinance coming. There's been a lot of thought behind this, a lot of concern in the public. And regionally, I mean, you can see other communities.
About e-bikes?
I'm not talking about the e-bikes. I'm talking, well.
Well, it is the e-motos. Those are regulated as well.
Yeah. But the e-bikes are, have also been regulated at other communities, and they've been reviewing this. So I don't view this as a rushed judgment by any means, but I understand the e-bike concern. And I think we should maybe carve that out and maybe treat that a little differently. But I think we should move on the scooters and the e-motos.
Yeah, I think there's no question in that.
And maybe understand the enforcement, how the department's going to be tasked with enforcing this. And let's see what comes back. If that's okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. All right. We don't always have unanimous views on this, Kirk. Even, I think, nuanced around the table here. So, let's move on to what used to be Item 9A, Budget Policy Direction. Tonight, Counsel will provide budget policy direction regarding the proposed water rate structures. Additionally, staff will provide an update on the Home Rule Sales Tax. Water and Electric Department Director Nick Nari is here to review the water rate study assumptions, and then we'll go from there. Nick, do you want to, okay?
Switch to, they could stay long.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, Counsel and President Dearborn. Thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. So as you mentioned, tonight, we'll be talking about the Budget Policy Direction for the Water Rate Study, and then at the end, Tim will talk about the Home Rule Sales Tax. So today on our agenda, we'll talk about a review of the 2017 Water Rate Study, the 100-Year Replacement Plan, community comparisons. Then Mr. Dave Nauman with 1898 and Company will present the 2025 Water Rate Study to you. There'll be some discussion, hopefully some policy direction. And then, as I mentioned, Tim will talk at the very end about Home Rule Sales Tax. So, just a quick recap, I believe, two of you were here in 2017 during the last rate study. So you've already lived this once. Trustee Myers and President Dearborn, you were here last time. So, just to recap, if you weren't here, in 2017, Counsel adopted a water rate plan based on the study done by Burns &amp; McDonald, which is the parent company of 1898 and Co. That set rates for 2018 to 2025. In doing so, what we, what you agreed to do and gave us direction to do would be to do a 100-year replacement plan. So this means we replace 1% of the system every year for the next 100 years, and then we do it all over again for the next 100 years after that. On a system of about 72 miles of water main, this equates to about 3,800 feet of water main per year. At the time of that study, we were facing some pretty dire straits in terms of the age of our system. The average age of the water main at that time was 87 years old. You also approved a four-month minimum fund balance policy, which we adhere to on an annual basis. You approved pay-as-you-go, a pay-as-you-go financial plan that would scale up the funding to achieve that 1% replacement goal by 2025. And you also approved a rate structure with annual rate increases about, in about 8.5% average annual increases to support the financial plan. So the 100-year replacement plan, which you've heard us talk about at the budget for the past eight years, has actually been a very strong success for the village. The plan itself called for spending about $10.2 million between 2017 and 2025, and we spent 99.82% of that money. So we did a pretty good job spending the capital and injecting it back into the system and improving the water mains you see here before you. Some of you, Trustee Alvinson, you've lived a water main project on your block, so you know what this entails. It's not clean. Sometimes it takes the whole summer, but we get it done, and we do coordinate the work with the engineering department to find efficiencies. If there's a bad road and bad water main, it makes sense to do this at the same time. And we create efficiencies there and identify high-value replacements. So overall, the program's been a marked success for the department. This just kind of shows you a snapshot of the last five years. What this graph is meant to show you is that inflationary pressures persist. Obviously, we know we've been in an inflationary environment. The red line you see here is the rising cost of water main installation per foot, so dollars per foot of water main installed. There's a pretty significant jump between '23 and '24, which led to some deferrals of planned projects as a result of some unplanned increases in the cost of water main. But what you can also see, the good news is, the blue line is the percent of the system that's been replaced. So, with the exception of that blip last year with some extremely high bids that came in for road rehab, we've actually been very successful in replacing at least 1% of the system. And that's really ahead of schedule because the funding was designed to get to that goal in 2025. So we've actually been somewhat ahead of schedule in that respect. And Mr. Nauman will speak to the inflationary pressures that still exist in the industry, and that's part of the discussion tonight. In terms of how we compare to the community, this is obviously a concern of yours when you approved this policy in 2017, make sure we're competitive, we're not overcharging our residents. This bar graph here kind of shows you where we fall, where the gray bar there, towards just left of center. So comparing ourselves to the region as a whole, Cook County, other water commissions, and then our local, our neighbors. So we're below the average. So we're on the good side of the graph here. And really, the 2017 rate study was a success. We feel it was very successful. As I mentioned, we spent almost 100% of the capital, injected it back into the system. We were able to maintain fund balance policy every year for the last eight years. And we implemented the 100-year replacement plan ahead of schedule. So overall, very successful implementation.
Nick, just on that point, how many of those communities, and Rob, maybe you know, how many of those communities have a similar plan in place of replacing their water mains at the rate that we are? Some of them are newer, younger.
Yeah.
Communities, but those of comparable age?
Comparable age have, you know, like inner-ring, first-rings suburbs that developed their water main, their infrastructure is similarly, you know, as old as ours. I think what you see in the discrepancy of rates is that you have, for example, Wilmatt is a wholesale supplier to other communities, and that helps keep their rates lower. Same thing in Highland Park and Northbrook. So they have significant wholesale customers that adds to their bottom line, which allows them to keep their rates a little bit lower.
As in business customers or?
Well, the Village of Glenview is a customer of Wilmatt. There's also a private utility company that is a customer of Wilmatt.
The Village of Northfield is a customer of ours. So.
Right.
The Village of Northfield is our customer.
Right.
So we sell wholesale to them.
But they charge a higher rate to the.
They charge a higher rate.
So that can help offset.
Correct.
Yeah.
The cost.
Those wholesale sales add the revenue to the system at appropriate scale to help keep your rates or our rates lower.
My recollection, though, from 2017 is that for comparable communities, I know, isn't that?
I know, it's a flashback.
I'm like impressed.
He doesn't remember.
That's a flex if I've ever heard one, Scott.
He doesn't remember. Come on. Who are you kidding?
It was that we talked about how Winnetka's probably a little bit ahead in terms of investing in replacing old infrastructure relative to other communities.
At the time, I think we were a little bit behind on water mains. We were falling behind, and that's why we needed to bring a plan forward because we weren't able to keep up. And we were having, we were experiencing a greater rate of water main failures and breaks, and that was something we need to get ahead of.
So what are we standing on?
In terms of.
Comparable to other communities.
Yeah, but compared, well, in terms of their infrastructure, we'd have to follow up with you on how that looks. But our infrastructure is our infrastructure, right? It's old.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Harrison is.
Yeah. But, you know, again, I mean, but when you look at rate structures, some of our neighbors that are lower, the reason they're low is because they have significant wholesale customers. But I'm sure that they're tending to their old infrastructure as well. They have to.
I think the industry as a whole, and then David can speak to this, is we're all facing the same issues. And then the unfunded mandate with the lead service on replacements is another pressure being put upon these water utilities.
Why are the DuPage County water rates so much higher? Is that because of the cost of water, because it's coming from well?
Oh, I can, yeah.
Or is it because they're going to tap into Lake Michigan with the $80 million per ton?
The DuPage Water Commission is a big part of it. Go ahead.
My understanding is the DuPage Water Commission is a quote-unquote "customer" of the city of Chicago, the Jardine Plant. So they are essentially taking that water from Chicago and providing an upcharge to cover their costs. So it's cost on top of cost on top of cost.
So that's why they bought green acres. Okay.
I believe the intent would be to have an independent source of water.
Okay. I was just curious. Okay.
Okay, Nick, carry on.
Yep. So that's all I have. And I just want to introduce Mr. Dave Nauman. Scott, you may remember, he was here in 2017. He was the one responsible for the.
He was the most exciting presentation, if I recall.
Well, compared to the electric study, it was.
The electric study. I was going to say.
Yes, yes. So Dave is with 1898, and he was here in 2017 and did the last study. So without that further ado, I'll let Dave do his thing. So, thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick. And again, I'm Dave Nauman with 1898 and Co., a part of Burns &amp; McDonald. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight to talk about our exciting rate study. We'll get into a little bit of background information. Some of this Nick's already covered, and so we won't dwell on that very long. We'll talk about the approach to the study, and then some of the findings that we are seeing right now, and then seek your input on next steps. So one of the things I think is helpful when we talk about changes in water costs is to look at things nationally. We can see from a couple of different publications, one, the Bureau Labor Statistics Water and Sewer Index, the other, the American Waterworks Association Rate Survey, that household water costs are rising about 5% per year. And this is happening at a time where general inflation, CPI, the Consumer Price Index, is rising at about 2.5%. So this is over a very long timeframe. But what's happening is the household water costs are rising about two times the rate of general inflation. There are some common contributors to that, and your community is feeling these as well. One, a trend in lower use per account. So as households adopt more efficient fixtures or become more aware of conservation, that can put pressure on your variable revenue stream, the revenue you get from the sale of water. Inflation on operating and capital costs for utilities is different than what we see happening in the household level, the CPI level. Particularly for utilities, the cost of personnel, the cost of chemicals, and the cost of energy over the last four or five years have all been relatively high relative to what we think about in CPI. And on project costs, so we've already heard some discussion around the cost of water main, that's been a dramatic, a volatile cost aspect in the cost of executing your projects. And with you doing a lot of water main replacement, that has a direct impact on your financials. More stringent water quality regulation. So lead service lines, we're in the midst of, a lot of communities are, trying to implement those programs to address. of, a lot of communities are, trying to implement those programs to address that issue. There will be more coming beyond that. How we deal with, as an industry, PFAS, the forever chemicals, and who's responsible for that, will be maybe the next mountain to climb. But this is also a cost driver for us. And then aging infrastructure. Most communities have old infrastructure, particularly underground, that is a liability and needs to be addressed. I think Nick's already shown this graph. The comment that we had as a team as we were walking through this recently was, for a community utility that's been through eight-and-a-half percent increases systematically over several years now, you still compare favorably to your peers. And the other element I would note as to why maybe costs vary by community, how you tend to finance your capital projects also affects things. So you are cash-funding everything. Most utilities will carry some debt to help fund projects that will last for long periods of time. You're extraordinarily financially healthy, and so there's value in that, but despite that, you're competitive in your rates, and I think that's a compliment. Okay, let's talk approach. We have a three-step approach. It's very similar to what we followed in the last study. The first step is financial planning, and the whole goal of financial planning is to determine how adequate your existing revenue stream is in meeting your future costs. And to the extent it isn't, what's a plan to address that? That's what we're here to talk to you tonight about, are some potential plans. Step two and step three, take information from that financial plan and design your rates so that they're fairly recovering your costs, so they're generating the revenue that you need. That will be the next step for us after tonight. When we put together financial plans, it inherently involves a lot of assumptions. One of those, and I mentioned this universal issue about declining use per account, when we look at your community over the last five or six years, you've had some movement in your water sales, but it largely appears to be weather-related. We've assumed relatively stable use per account in the projections in our financial plan. I do think you've got some upside and the potential for growth and redevelopment that could add revenue to. We think that's a reasonable assumption based on what you're at, on where you're at. O and M inflation, we all see CPI kind of settling down now. When we look at O and M inflation, your operating costs going forward, we're estimating three to three-and-a-half percent per year on those. The water main replacement costs, we had our engineering experts take a look at estimates that were created in the last study. We know they fit your community pretty well over the last few years, with 2024 as being the one exception. We had them adjust those cost estimates to reflect current inflationary conditions, and they would say two-point-six million a year in today's dollars is the equivalent of one percent of your system. And that's assuming that you're coordinating with the Streets Program and gaining the efficiencies out of those projects, like spin discussed. Northfield rate increases, we're assuming that's three-and-a-half percent per year. It's tied to the CPI for urban Chicago. And then the minimum reserve of thirty-three, a third of your operating costs. The one assumption we have made here that's inherent throughout the plans we'll talk to you about too is there's, again, all cash-funded. There's no debt issuance in the plan to accomplish the goals. We'll have three scenarios for you. All three scenarios fund the same future operating costs, they fund the same capital program, but they differ in the approach to raising rates. And so that's really the differentiator, we'll highlight that here in a minute, but they all fund the same costs. This is a snapshot of your capital improvement program. So the graph to the left shows you the annual spend by year. The dark blue is main replacement, and so you can see it represents about half of the capital improvement plan. You also have some treatment plant projects. We know your treatment plant is entering a phase of needing some renewal and replacement itself, and that's the gray. And that represents the next significant chunk, about a third of your capital plan. And the remainder is just other miscellaneous projects and lead service lines, which is, the lead service lines is in the teal color there. The sum of all of those years, from 2025 to 2034, is in the graph to the right, it's about fifty-eight million in total capital expense over the time period. This graph illustrates what we call revenue requirements. These are the annual costs you're trying to fund. The orange represents your operating expense, and the teal bar here represents cash-funded capital improvements. We compare those two things against the black line. So the solid black line is revenue under existing rates, and then you can see in the proposal here would be six-and-a-quarter percent rate increases per year to match your revenue requirements over time and fund both operating and capital. The scenarios are differentiated here. So I mentioned, we're funding the same capital and operating costs, which is showed up, it shows up at the very bottom of this table. You see the same CIP across all three scenarios. We're achieving similar fund balance, so that measure is also being met. But what you'll see when you look year-to-year at the proposed increase, scenario one is a levelized increase, it's the same amount predictable every year. Scenario two has a lower initial increase. I think that's a nod, to an extent, to just rate fatigue and trying to maybe take just a little bit of a pause and then come back with a series of revenue increases to restore the plan. And then level three is just front-loaded from the get-go. Scenario three is front-loaded from the get-go. So whereas we have a levelized six-and-a-quarter, you've got almost a five percent increase in 2026, and then the scenario three would be eight and then declining. When we look at the average increase for these three scenarios, it's the very bottom section, the bottom line of that section. Six-and-a-quarter percent for scenario one is pretty easy to defer, infer, but when you get to scenario two, it's about six percent on average, and scenario three, it's a little less than that, it's about five-point-four. And the reason that they get lower as we progress across the scenarios is you're generating more cash upfront with those front-loaded rate increases, and it allows us to slow the rate to the rate pair's benefit later in the plan. So this is the ask. One is, I think it's worth just confirming, we're all on the same page with respect to the assumptions being made underpinning the scenarios. We're very interested in your feedback in the scenarios, and then our next step would be to come back with a preferred financial plan and present to you proposed rates.
Questions? Scott?
A question on the costs related to the water treatment plant improvements. The biggest dollars associated with that are, you know, 2029, 2023, 2034. How realistic are those estimates? How much contingency are we kind of building into this?
Right, so the big bump you see in 2029 is going to be replacing the, at the very least, the diesel generators that are down there. Those are the primary backup for the water system since we have no elevated storage. So the water fund is funding a portion of that replacement. That's the big bump you see in '29. In '32, '33, '34, you're really seeing things that are at the end of their useful life, so the filter media, the pumps, the things that are involved in the treatment process. At this point, we feel like those are good estimates based on the quotes we've got and factoring in inflation between now and then. We feel like those are comfortable estimates. It varies. We've got, you know, pumps down there that are thirty, forty years old. The generators themselves are fifty years old, so that's the reason that we're going to replace it, and that's, we'll be discussing that at a study session in October, implementation of that. But the water treatment plant is almost in the same scenario that the water mains were in eight years ago, where it's, we've deferred, 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 and now it's time to consider reinvesting that capital in there to get it for the next forty, fifty years.
Okay, questions?
Oh, yeah, I had some questions. Oh, wait, I had some questions.
So we actually have a formal recommendation, do you want us to give that? And then we'll do.
Tina, what's your question?
Okay.
Yeah, do we have a sense of what the average age of the water mains are now? I mean, if we've done well and it was eighty-seven, is it still essentially in the, you know, eighty years old? Or did we get a?
I don't have that offhand.
Do we get a little bit of accelerant? You know, I'm just kind of curious if we are a little bit ahead of the game now.
I think we are. I don't have the number memorized, but the highest value targets that we've been going for.
Yeah.
Are mains that were already a hundred years old.
Over a hundred.
At least a hundred, yeah. We've, mains that were, you know, from the eighteen-nineties, you know, the first mains that were put in the village, small mains, four-inch mains, six-inch mains. So I would say, if I would.
Actually, I was the one that came up. I'm quite proud of it, Rob.
Oh, my, oh, my, ours.
I could certainly go back and run the numbers for you.
I was just curious.
I wouldn't, just anecdotally, I wouldn't expect that number to mean too much.
Yeah, it's not like we made, you know, huge leaps and great.
Right.
And then, can we just talk a little bit about, because I wasn't here in 2017, the thirty-three percent reserve? So that reserve, is that for, you know, to ensure we have enough capital on hand if a generator goes out? Or, you know, is that an industry standard? Just, not that I'm all in favor of reserves, I just want to understand what we think about the reserve fund for.
Yeah, that was an industry standard, to do four months of operating costs on hand.
Yeah.
That could be used as a rainy day fund or to stabilize cash flow if you had, you know, a couple of years, you know, of really wet summers and low usage, and you didn't get the revenue that you achieved, you had some reserves on hand to stabilize, you know, your spending.
And, you know, I don't, are we thinking that we're going to also, with AMI, capture more revenue, you know, that could be leaking from the system right now? I mean, is that, are we baking that assumption in that we're going to have some better collections?
If anything, it would be the increased accuracy of the meters.
Yeah.
I wouldn't put too much. If anything, it'd be maybe a percent or two.
Okay.
Not a noted improvement, but the newer meters will be more accurate than the old meters, so there may be some improvement, but you may have a counterbalancing effect with the lower consumption, so it remains to be seen.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then last question is, do we, I mean, it sounds like a lot of the disruption in, like, you know, make, I mean, it's kind of this weird situation. On one hand, we have a goal to be more sustainable, you know, reduce our water usage, but on the other hand, we benefit from it because we use things to fund the system. Do we think that that technology leap to reduce the water usage, we're not going to see any big disruption or, you know, new technology coming out that's going to, you know, even further reduce water consumption? That, I mean, that's not baked into any assumption, is it?
No, I think, like David mentioned, we've looked at the historic trends, and it's really largely weather-dependent.
Oh.
So if we get, like Tim said, if we get a wet summer, because the majority of our consumption is for lawn sprinkling, so if we get a really wet summer, people aren't using their sprinklers as much, if they have it set up as such, if it's automated, then it runs no matter what. But if we get a really wet summer, we don't sell as much water, but that could fluctuate year over year. So if anything, if the climate changes as such that we get more precipitation on an annual basis, I would expect sales to drop at that point. Again, that we'd have to see how that comes through.
Or if a big account that uses a lot of city water, you know, a golf course, you know, that's probably the biggest thing that moves the needle.
Yeah. And like David mentioned, we took into account that there are accounts that are going to exist now that haven't existed, so the One-Eckah parcel has had no water consumption for seven, eight years. Now you're going to have these tenants and businesses, Chase Bank, the Walden, there's other developments that are going to help drive up that consumption.
Okay.
I was just going to add, on the golf course, with the stormwater intergovernmental agreement, we negotiated that they would be charged a wholesale rate, essentially what we charge Northfield. But the last time I checked with the operators of the golf course, they've been able to use all the stormwater.
The storage, right.
Yeah, so they haven't really used any potable water, which you think about appropriate use for potable water, that's a good thing.
Yeah, but has that impacted ours, and are we taking that account in our assumptions? Yeah, okay.
Why don't we hear the recommendation on this?
So after reviewing the three scenarios, we did discuss, and we did land on scenario one, the levelized rate increase, as I guess the official recommendation of staff. We felt, in just looking at it, it did, you know, provided the revenues that were needed, and we felt that the levelized rate structure, it provided for a stable budgeting as well as simple to communicate to customers since it was just the same amount each year. It was kind of how we landed on that. It seemed to work for the last several years, that, you know, levelized rate structure. But either one of the scenarios would provide sufficient revenue to fund the capital and the operating going forward.
Tim, why is the fund balance in scenario one less at the end of the, at 2034 than the other scenarios?
It's less because it's even throughout the ten years, and like scenario three, it's front-loaded, so you get that eight percent upfront, but then it compounds over time, so each success, you know, each additional increase is on the compounded amount of the previous year.
The scenario.
So it does accumulate revenue at a little bit faster clip, so it does, at the end of the day, accumulate a little bit more revenue in total over the ten years than the levelized rate increase.
I guess. And then what is the, you and I talked about this, but what's the, what's the current in-place, if we didn't do anything, what do the rates for the next ten years look like? It's an eight-and-a-half percent increase this coming year, and I think you mentioned to me, then it starts trailing down?
If, yes, if we didn't.
Is it scenario three, I guess, is my question? Is it essentially scenario three?
So, well, all of these scenarios build in the additional capital that is required. So if you wanted to run a rate scenario based on, you know, not that additional capital, but at the level capital that we're currently spending at?
Well, what I'm asking is, what have we said would be the twenty-six rate increase for water? What have we communicated to residents on that?
Oh, in the budget. I mean, I could pull that number.
I mean, I think it's eight-plus percent, right?
Yeah, it was right around there, so.
So how long, beginning the 2017 study, we had the eight-and-a-half percent for X number of years, how many years that was going to roll out, this is the last year, to this year?
To this year.
So twenty-five, yes.
And then what happens?
And then it was projected to level down.
It just levels down?
Yes.
Closer to three.
So if we went to six-and-a-quarter, it would be a reduction from what's expected for 2026, but then higher than what's expected for 2028, 29, so on and so forth. Essentially.
So, I should add, the eight-and-a-half percent increase was to cover the cost of the water main replacement program, but we also had to add an additional one-and-a-half percent to cover the lead service line replacement. So really, for fiscal year '25, it was a ten percent increase.
Right.
But the numbers that David has prepared factor all of that in. So all the capital, plant, lead, distribution mains, it's all rolled into one bucket, and the six-and-a-quarter, or whichever number you choose, covers all of that capital. So we wouldn't have to do it above and beyond for lead services.
And the staff, you prefer the levelized, it's just simpler, it's cleaner?
Yes, we recommended that. It wasn't a, you know, a hard unanimous, you know, this is definitely what we need. I mean, we, I think we're pretty flexible on the different rate structures, you know, and I've heard feedback that perhaps, you know, structure three with the front-loaded increases might be a better way to go, to continue the trend, you know, and get that, the revenue upfront. So it's, I would say it's a soft recommendation. We do recommend scenario one, like I said, it worked well for the previous ten years, it's easy to communicate and build into the budget and plan for, but either of the scenarios gets us to where we need to be as far as accumulating revenue on a pay-as-you-go basis to fund capital and then operations of the water fund.
So what do people think? Any opinions one way or another?
My, I don't feel that strongly about it, but my first inclination was number one because if, for these others, oh, rate fatigue, I mean, what, people are going to suddenly not be fatigued in a year when we jack, like we go down to four to protect people because they're feeling fatigue, and then a year later, it goes up even higher, and they're, you know, rate fatigue is never going to end, I don't think, and I don't, I think the others are a little bit confusing. If they make more money for the village, I don't have a problem with them, but the straightforward one seems like people would just have that, just from a user perspective, it would make more sense.
Okay, Kirk?
I agree with Bridget. I also feel if we went with number three, there's potential that we might forget or find reasons to keep a higher rate in the future. And to keep ourselves in check, to keep it consistent, I think would be a better option.
I like that. Yep. Scott?
So I am going to be the contrarian and suggest number three.
Okay.
I think a couple of reasons. Number one is. Number one is, I think most residents are here for an extended period of time. So the, the greatest cost savings that we can give them is by front loading and then dropping, dropping it down. I think the second thing is with an aging infrastructure, if something unexpected were to happen, we do have a, a little bit more of ability to absorb that and, and act more quickly. I think that the council has demonstrated pretty strong fiscal discipline so that if we say to staff, you know, we want to bring this down, I think that, you know, we'll, they'll certainly be the ones reminding us and we'll have to make an explicit action. It won't just kind of happen by happenstance. So I, I mean, I, I don't think any of us like are going to fall on our swords over water rates. Back in 2030, in 1935, when I was here though, there was a very passionate debate.
Yeah.
But I would go with three.
What about a scenario, Scott, that incorporated the first two or three years of the eight, seven, seven and a half, whatever? And then we leveled it out at five. So in other words, it didn't go down to the 2.9. Tim, you and I talked about this a little bit. We didn't go down to that 2.95%, but it sort of leveled out for the back half of this at 5% or whatever the number is to get the capital we need.
I think you were saying almost more instead of a slope down, more of a, like a stable for three years, step for three years and another step.
That was, that was the only other scenario. I thought, I, I like the elegance of the level, but I could go with something like that. The 2.95s, I mean, it's all compounded. So the people that move into town is, they're still paying for it because it's, it's compounded. But I kind of, I like the step down a little bit better where we keep those higher rates in there, maybe we reduce something along the way, basically.
We can, I think, finesse it in a number of different ways, but my sense is we don't have a high transient population. Let's provide our residents with a, a longer term savings.
And the, the fund balance, you would raise a little more money on scenario three if you did that, even a Sasha a little bit. But Rob, what do you think?
I guess this is in the, to me, it's in the messaging. I think there is, you know, I, I think we're, if you look at assessments, it's going to be a tough couple of years for the village to, you know, not, not based on what we're doing, but we have our partner just to try and fix things in this village. I, I don't have a problem with three as well. But I'm, you know, if this, if this caucus, if this village wanted to go to a one, that's fine too. I think, I think a step down gives a little bit of relief. I'm not sure if stepped on to 5%. It's not really, it's kind of defeating. If you're going to do that, I'd just go to number one if you're not going to give some type of savings in the future. That kind of defeats what they're trying to do here. But is there a snapback at some point where, you know, this is, when is this, in '34? What happens at, at the end of, you know, 20, are we, are we done? Can residents say this, this is an eight year program and then it's going to?
Goes on forever.
We don't know. It's, it's, I guess that's my question. Is this a go on forever type of thing?
So we, we talked about that in this process and some things to think about. The 100 year replacement plan is going to be for eternity.
100 years.
At least 100 years. The lead service lines, we, we have to have them removed by 2038. We're projecting to have them out by 2035, hopefully ahead of schedule. So that's a cost that'll fall off. The investments in the water plant are quote unquote a one time expense.
Right.
You'll, you'll do that. That'll get you through the next 40 years.
Right.
So the capital you're going to spend towards the end of this plan, those are more one time expenses and then the programs will fall off. So I would say we'd be going through the same exercise in 2033, 2034. And then hopefully you end up with some lower numbers. But there are, the cost pressures we're experiencing now should decrease by the end of the plan. And I, and I would say.
That's what I'm trying to understand the messaging because if we say, hey, you're up for 5% for the rest of the, you know, we're going to compound at 5, it just becomes a little.
It's a big number.
Can we make, you know, better, can we make, you know, any type of relief to this community to make them feel a little better about what we're?
And I, I would say to play devil's, to play devil's advocate, to, to speak to what Kurt said, those outer years in scenario three, they, they wouldn't currently cover what the CPI is. So there may be a, a temptation to re-nag on our agreement and increase them because we would, currently we wouldn't even be covering inflation. So we'd have to talk about possibly doing another increase later in the plan, so.
Well, that's the benefit of the 3.1 idea, but not going down to 2.95.
9.5.
Keeping it more stabilized and protecting against those inflationary pressures.
But not level at five.
No.
Something less than five.
Whatever the number, they could work the numbers. Yeah.
But, I mean, one time expense, I mean, are we, you know, at some point, we probably should get into the plan of, or in the outer years of collecting reserve money for those 40 year, you know, to be able to replace the, whatever equipment, have a 40 year life, right?
Right.
We don't want to be in the same, we don't want future generations to be sitting here doing the exact same thing where, you know, right? So at some point, we could continue forever because you're constantly need to replace, you know, replenish a capital improvement plan fund.
Right. It'd be how you want to depreciate that and have your sinking fund to pay for it.
Right.
I, I would hope that maybe we would plan far enough in advance, unlike the first time with the water mains, that we would know, okay, we think this, the plant will get us through 2080, so we should start building up the reserves in 2050.
Right.
And then we would take a, a measured approach to that. Maybe if there's a.
Well, I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Can we maybe?
I have one more question.
Oh, okay.
Does this assume any new regulations for PFAS? And like, is that some of the improvements that we're going to be making to the?
That's currently not in our 15 year CIP. It's really unclear at this point what the, the remediation would even consist of.
Okay.
We, right, it's such, it's, you're talking about parts per trillion in terms of what you need to remove. So it's, it's very, at this point.
There could be that aspect too, where there's new regulations that come in.
You may want to front load it a little bit.
There could.
That's the other reason.
Yeah.
There, there's, could always be future regulations we're subject to.
Well, can we, Rob, you were going to say something?
I was just going to say, one of the, it is probably not the most popular thing to say, but when you have a utility, the customer does have control over their consumption. So they could put in more water efficiency measures in their homes, they could sprinkle less. There's things that they can also do to control their spend. So it's not factored into rates, but it could be part of the messaging as well that we needed to.
Well, I, I think we would all be in agreement that we're very impressed with the, the past 10 years. I mean, you know, you're on track, 10.2 million, 10.2 million. I mean, it's pretty remarkable actually. And maybe that what we're saying here is scenario one, scenario three with maybe a little revision, why don't you think about that for the budgeting? Is that kind of what, you know, and maybe that's the policy direction we're giving on this. If you come, yeah, I think if you came back with scenario one, no one's going to get all upset. Or you may come back with scenario three amended that might raise a little more, give you a little more buffer to Scott's point, to Tina's point, early on, and maybe you like that concept. And we don't, and we don't go down to 2.95.
I'm kind of liking the idea of three site years, three set years, three site years.
You could do something like that.
Kind of a step approach. But we'll, we will run the numbers and we'll work with David and throughout the budget process to, you know, further analyze and kind of finalize a recommendation that will be brought with the budget.
Okay. David, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For doing the study. Nick, thank you. Tim, thank you. You're going to talk about the home rule sales tax?
Yeah, real quickly, home rule sales tax update. So as you know, we brought the home rule sales tax as part of the budget process last year. Council directed us to have a study session on it, which we did in July 8th, which we received feedback that was generally supportive, but wanted a community outreach. Since that time, we did perform that community outreach with direct communications to the businesses. We had an online open house and also a presentation on the feedback on August 19th to the council on that community outreach, which was attended by the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce who voiced support for the 1% home rule sales tax. So the next steps would be that we will be including that in our budgeted revenue for the 2026 annual budget. And we'll bring an ordinance for the 1% home rule sales tax at the time of the public hearing on the budget. So just one other note during our presentation, the estimated annual revenue for the sales tax is 1.5 million. That's what we will eventually achieve in year two. But due to the timing of the way the state collects it, if we pass it during the fall budget session, they don't begin collections until sales from July 1st and after. So it'd be half that amount in the first year.
So effectively a phase in. I mean.
Yeah, effectively a phase.
Effectively. Tina, any chamber feedback, recent chamber feedback on this?
No, we talked about it today. I think people are resigned or, you know, there are those merchants that have, had voiced their concerns. But I think, and Kristin can back me up on this, I think generally the thought is, is that since we would be consistent with all our neighbors and surrounding communities, that they don't see it as a detriment.
Okay. Well, I think any objection to having that as a policy? You come back with that, build that into the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Yep. All right.